Good morning and welcome to the very first Ordinary Council meeting in our brand new chambers. The time is 9am and we'll commence with the acknowledgement of country, if I could refer to councillor Cornselman. While you do that, I'll just note the attendance here. From my left, we have councillor Jacob Madsen, councillor Sheila Island, the deputy mayor Nicole Johnick, councillor Paul Tully, councillor Marnie Doyle, councillor Andrew Feckner, councillor Ross Milligan and councillor Kate Cornselman.
Ipswich City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we are gathered, acknowledging our gratitude that we share this land today, but also acknowledging the cost of that sharing and our hope that we can move to a place of justice and partnership together.
Thank you very much councillor Cornselman. We'll now move on to the opening prayer, councillor Doyle.
Heavenly Father, we seek you to be with us in this meeting today. Assist us to be an example to others, bringing strength and encouragement in whatever we do and equip us for the ongoing challenges as they arise. Give the guidance to continue to make wise decisions for both the short and long term benefit of our city and our community, regardless however difficult and unpopular some will be. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you councillor Doyle. We move on to apologies and leave of absence and there are none. Go to condolences, there are none. Item six, tributes, there are none. Item seven, presentation of petitions, there are none. And just before we move on to item eight, I just want, I think it's a very special morning, not only is our very first council meeting, but whilst it's one of the coldest mornings, I think we've had Ipswich for a while. I think our hearts are all warm with the fact that Ipswich will be an Olympic city. Last night, it was said that Brisbane, the 2032 Games, and we know that those games were held throughout South East Queensland. Ipswich has been determined to have the modern pentathlon, will be one of the events here, as well as of the preliminary soccer matches as well. We're obviously all so competing for other matches and other events, but I think it's a really wonderful time for our city and I think it's very fitting in this new, I think, our new chambers here, but also have such wonderful news as well. Now I'll move on to item eight, which is the presentations and deputations. And we have a presentation from the students from Ipswich Girls Grammar and their hack for community impact. So in May 2021, Ipswich Girls Grammar School hosted the IGGS Hack for Community Impact, a hackathon to solve community challenges. Representatives of the winning teams from years seven to ten will present their proposed solutions to problems relating to youth, safety and community in Ipswich. I invite the representatives from IGGS to the lectern.
Good morning Mayor, councillors and members of the public. I'd like to begin by saying what a privilege it is to be speaking in front of you today. I can honestly say I'm sure we are all extremely thankful to be presented with this opportunity. However, I'm also sure a few of you are wondering how we got here. Well, two months ago, from the 21st to the 23rd of May, Ipswich Girls Grammar School participated in a hackathon. At this event, with the guidance of entrepreneur Miss Peter Ellis, we explored issues surrounding safety, the lack of youth volunteers and the lack of kindergartens and early education centres within the Ipswich community. We were given a total of approximately 16 hours to prepare our final pitches that had to address one of the aforementioned issues outlined earlier. This event was a great opportunity to learn problem solving techniques and develop our teamwork skills while working collaboratively. At the end of day three, we presented our final pitches to a board of judges and the three best pitch decks were chosen. These three pitches are what you'll be hearing today.
Thank you Mayor, please ask you to state your name before you speak.
Hi, I'm Izzy and we are Agent Aid.
Next slide please.
The problem we are addressing today is the voluntary work rates among youth. Throughout the Ipswich community, the amount of young people participating in voluntary work is extremely minimal. Although, a survey we conducted revealed that 86% of 50 respondents would like to partake in voluntary work, but cannot. Furthermore, they said the main reason they could not partake was the struggle of finding accessible and available voluntary opportunities within our community. Next slide please. Our solution to this problem is to create an app in which businesses and organisations can advertise voluntary work. From there, young people can view details and contact businesses in simple and effective actions to be involved in our community and expand their connections. Next slide please.
I'm Bridget. This problem is worth solving as youth of the next generation and therefore of the hands dealing with future problems and issues in our world. We need to spread our connections throughout the community, which we can do most effectively through volunteering. The action of volunteering also increases the likelihood of finding employment, which is helpful to those in Ipswich who are seeking work. Next slide please. Furthermore, our app would provide direct contact with multiple organisations, allowing quick and effective connections. Results from the affirmation survey corroborates this statement by confirming that 92% of respondents would utilise our app, illustrating the current demand for an app such as this to be introduced into the market. Next slide please.
I'm Addie. Agent Aid's target market is the youth population, which ranges from the ages of 13 to 25. This is evident in the design and marketing strategy of our app, in which the layout is similar to pre-existing social media platforms such as Instagram. This will result in easy navigation and application by users. Furthermore, the design choice validates the solution, as according to ABC News, teens average a total of seven hours per day on social media. Next slide please. The target audience will be acquired through advertising on social media apps such as Snapchat, Pinterest, TikTok and Instagram. This is an effective method for advertising the company to the youth population for reasons detailed previously. Once customers download the app, they will be met with a sign-in screen in which they will enter details regarding their age, email, username and password. Next slide please.
I'm Denby and our business model includes ad revenue and subscription policies. While the app will be free to download, companies wanting to advertise their volunteering programmes will be required to pay a small subscription fee. Initially, a small amount of government funding may be required to jumpstart the project, as well as sponsors who would be advertising on our users' feed pages. Next slide please. To get the application up and running, we would appreciate support from you, the Ipswich City Council. This assistance would include introductions to an app developer, allowing the prototype to become a reality, and exposure which will assist in increasing publicity on social media platforms. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ruby. Safety, one of the most valued factors of today's society, which plays a part in each and every one of our lives. Every iconic city tourist destination or popular suburbs all maintain a high level of security and ensure that people are safe from harm and danger. And without safety, these idolised cities will most definitely collapse. So how come Ipswich still has over 9,000 crimes committed in 2021 alone? Good morning, I'm Ruby and today I'm here with my team to talk to you about making people in Ipswich feel safer and our innovative solution to solve this problem. Next slide please.
Although the current safety programmes in place are very efficient, we feel the need to further address some of the concerns that are rising in our community. Based off our survey data, we've discovered that women tend to face more harassment compared to men and majority of this harassment already occurs from males. This unjust problem is absolutely detrimental to our society and must be solved immediately. Our goal is to make those who feel safe and uncomfortable in Ipswich feel secure and content with the place that they live in. 70.7% of people have experienced an unsafe moment in Ipswich over the past two years. We also asked if there was something that could have helped and most of the responses mentioned well lit streets or more security. What we want to do is fix these flaws that exist in our community so that everyone can feel safe and secure with the suburb or city that they live in. Next slide please.
Our solution to this problem is simple yet effective method. We have created a simple safety app that consists of a panic button, an Ipswich survey and a crime map. The panic button is an accessible icon on our app that when pressed will send the police your exact location or to the people who you need it to be sent to. It will be much faster and way more effective than calling police as it will be prioritised on the emergency helpline as well as being easy to click and call instead of dialing. Next slide please.
The Ipswich survey option can be used for feedback and suggestions from the community for ways to improve our city and can be used for gaining different perspectives and opinions of the quality of safety in our community. The crime map is essentially a feature that allows you to find the safest routes and paths in Ipswich and can be used to report any incidents in the city. These features can be used by anyone in the community and will help them feel more secure and content with the place and the place they live in and their surroundings. Next slide please. You may ask, well, why is this problem worth solving? Well, let me assure you that safety is something that affects the entire community, not just youths, not just adults, everyone. The quality of safety in our community is dropping at an alarming rate and the situation needs to be attacked immediately. If we want to keep our city and our future generations safe from harm and danger, then we must improve our current systems and programmes to ensure the future that we dream of is still within our reach. Next slide please.
We want our app to be something that people can rely on if they ever feel vulnerable or unsafe at any point in time. We know our app can be used by anyone regardless of their age, gender or religion, as we know that everyone deserves the right to feel safe and protected. If we can get the majority of Ipswich to download our app, we are certain that we can be one step closer to ensuring their safety and the ones around them. Next slide please.
We are team I S C and we are solving the safety issue in Ipswich before it gets out of hand. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Amelia S and the problem we are trying to solve is that 50% of children under the age of five do not attend kindergarten in Redbank Plains. This percentage in Brisbane is 95%. Not attending Kindy can affect basic skills that most kids normally learn at a young age. Next slide please.
I'm Amelia W. We created Ilk and it stands for Ipswich Little Local Kindy. Ilk is a pop-up Kindy van that drives around collecting kids for kindergarten and then dropping them off at a local park for learning. There would be a therapy dog that would come every week for the kids to play with. We would use hands-on learning and provide food for the kids. Guardians could also have English lessons that would be provided through TAFE. Next slide three times please.
The reason why this problem is worth solving is because we need to get the percentage in Redbank Plains up, looking more like Brisbane's percentage. This is to get more kids learning the basics before they go into primary school. In turn, this would take also a huge weight off prep teachers' shoulders. Next slide please.
Our target market is the parents of kids aged one to five who need to attend Kindy. We would also need the kids of the parents to enjoy Ilk and convince their parents to attend again. Next slide please. We will inquire customers by having posters hung up around playgrounds we plan to visit and posters in local shopping centres. When we see parents walking around with young children, we can give them business cards with times for when we plan to come to the playgrounds each week. Next slide please.
I spoke to Gerald over the phone from Redbank Plains Community Centre. He told us why the kids were not attending Kindy and confirmed our queries. He was very knowledgeable on the subject and told us information he knew. Some things he told us were information about parents and guardians not speaking well English and parents having family that they can send their children to instead of Kindy. Next slide please.
Our key competition is other kindergartens around Red Bank Plains. Another problem is the activity of the parents and how much they will be determined to send their kids to an early education centre. Next slide please.
We are better than other kindergartens as we have more facilities and more multicultural and inclusive than other Kindys around the area. The parents will want to send their kids back to our Kindy as they will love it and beg their parents to come back. Next slide please.
This is our team made up of Amelia S, Amelia W, Chelsea, Beth and Lizzie. Next slide please.
Next slide please. And again please, sorry. No, again. And again, sorry. You may also scan our QR code to see our website. Amelia and I have loved being able to come here and present for you today. We really appreciate you listening to us speak today on half of our team. Thank you.
I now open the floor to the councils for any questions of any of the teams. Councillor Island, you got your microphone on? Microphone on? Microphone on?
I'd like to congratulate the team that have done the preschool problems in Redbank Plains. Councillor Madsen and I are also following the same path, but we're trying to work through the library to try and get more and we know that the schools down there are already starting to run pre-prep classes to try and get the children that don't speak English settled and used to some discipline before they start school. So I'm with you girls, thank you very much for bringing it up for the general population to realise that we have a problem in Redbank Plains.
Just through you men, not a question, more of a comment and a congratulations to all the young ladies that came out to present to us this morning. I think that, you know, that lateral thinking you get from, you know, diving into social problems is really important and it's good to see that there's young people in our community that are identifying things that they can make a positive change towards. So I congratulate the school and I congratulate the young ladies for coming out here today. Such a wonderful effort, such innovative ideas and I think that, you know, technology and access to it is really important and the app ideas were really great. So I hope that, you know, these ideas can continue on and that we keep passionately pursuing them because I think there's some really great ideas and I echo the sentiments of councillor Island in that, you know, you've identified a huge problem in Red Bank Plains. It is a huge problem and it's one that we need to face head on and such a great creative solution, easy, accessible. So I hope that moving forward, we can throw our support behind you in any way that we absolutely can and I encourage you to keep pursuing these with not only us at Ipswich City Council, but the state and federal members as well, because I think there's real merit to these really great ideas. And lots of the planning work has been done and, you know, developing such awesome skills at taking surveys, identifying problems. I think, you know, I wasn't doing such amazing things at your age, so I can't wait to see these leaders of the future, you know, sitting in chairs like we are today, solving the problems of tomorrow. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Feckner. May I ask, how did you go in identifying a problem? What was your process? If you have someone who's a spokesperson there?
We had a few people come in and they addressed, they like showed us a presentation and they showed us things that could be improved in the community and then we got to choose one and build a solution around that.
Excellent. I think councillor Madsen was going to ask a question.
It's not a question, but I'd just like to make some comments thanking you for presenting today. I think there's some really creative solutions to some serious problems in our city. I've got particular reverence for the local Little Kindy. I think it's really inspiring to see young kids take up the challenge to advocate for those younger than them. Education's a human right and it's probably the number one thing to make the world better. If people are more educated, they can make better decisions, they can be nicer to each other because they have a lot more security in their life from everything that flows from it. So, yeah, I'm really humbled to see such passionate advocacy for what I think is the number one problem. It's not a government problem, like a lot of people treat it. It's a community problem. We have a responsibility for our neighbours. We have a responsibility for the people walking down the street to make sure that they have the best life that they can get. And, yeah, I'm really happy to hear your ideas today. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Madsen. I think the deputy mayor has a question or a comment.
Thank you ladies. Your presentations were really compelling and genuine and your solutions were brilliant as well. The correlation from the early learning Kindy to then teaching their caregivers English because they might come from a non-English speaking background was brilliant. Can I ask who come up with that idea? Or was it a group effort? A group effort? That's amazing, well done. And then trying to fill the gap in volunteer through an app and getting the young people on board as well and giving them a platform that they're already well versed in was awesome too. So, yeah, well done, congratulations. You should be very proud.
Thank you deputy mayor. Councillor Doyle?
I have a question and a comment for the ladies. Quick question. When any group of advocates come together, there's always a difference of opinion. We as a group of councillors absolutely know that and we debate issues all the time. I was just wondering if there are any differing points of view and how you may have problem solved that and come together as a group in decision-making. No? Great. I wish we could all agree here like that. Just a quick comment, I just concur absolutely with my fellow councillors' comments this morning. I just want to point out that I know an IGGS girls' values include respect and care and that is why this school, your school, has had a very long and successful history of, you know, producing great leaders in the community whilst academic excellence and integrity are very, very important. The word emotional IQ is bandied around all the time and at the heart of emotional IQ is kindness, being able to get along with your fellow co-workers and then becoming a leader and just showing some kindness and compassion to your staff. So, good job ladies, very, very proud that you're members of our community.
Thank you councillor Doyle. Any other comments or questions? In closing, I just want to commend you all, ladies. I think your hack on volunteering was spot on. We certainly see that in the community, when COVID hit, you know, the state government set up that care army and I think they had 30,000 people volunteer for that and over half were people under 30. So it's really great to see how do you harness that. And also when we had our recent community development session with some of the volunteer groups, the number one issue was how do we harness the volunteers of our youth? So, thank you very much. Also, note the hack on safety and community safety is really important. I think Ipswich City Council and Ipswich has a great record with its Safe City camera programme. I did get grilled by a journalist yesterday who was telling me that we spend too much money on it, but I'll stand by the fact that community safety is really important. So I'm very keen to see how we can support and expand and make our community even safer. Thank you very much. Obviously you've hit the nail on the head with the Kindy issue that councillor Island and councillor Madsen do raise on how do we lift up those participation rates in Kindy. So moving forward, I'd like, so thank you very much. I'd also like to thank the principal of IGGS, Dr Peter Britton, for also being here in the public gallery and I can see some of the IGGS staff here. So thank you very much. We're very honoured to have you all here. And with that, I'd like to move that we, based on what we've seen today, that we refer these three hacks to our Community, Culture and Arts and Sports Committee for further discussion and development on what we could do in that. And I would assume the chair of that committee, would you like to second that councillor Feckner?
Yeah, I'll second that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on that motion? No, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand and it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you very much ladies. We'll now move on to item nine, which is public participation and there is none. We'll now move on to item 10, which is the declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. And I call if there are any declarations of interest on the agenda.
In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act of 2009, I councillor Andrew Feckner inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item number 14.6. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is my business interests in both A1A Proprietary Limited and Bar Heisenberg Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town in Ipswich. I plan on dealing with this declarable conflict by leaving the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much councillor Feckner. Do we have any other declarations of interest? Councillor Madsen.
In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Jacob Madsen inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 14.6, Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee report. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is I'm a member of the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labour Day Committee and our building, the Ipswich Trades Hall, is immediately adjacent to a lot of those Ipswich Central Redevelopment items. I intend to deal with this conflict by leaving the meeting room while the matter is considered and voted on.
Thank you very much.
I'd just make a note that I declared a conflict for an item in last week's Growth, Infrastructure and Waste Committee, but that's made under, that committee has delegated powers. So I don't believe I need to do anything about that item because it's just a receiving note of the minutes rather than endorsing the decisions made.
Agreed. Thank you councillor Madsen. Thank you very much for those two councils for their open declarations of interest. We now move on to item 11.1, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the Ordinary Council meeting that was held on the 24th of June 2021. Would anyone like to ask anyone a question on those? No, I see councillor Milligan with his hand up. I'll ask for a mover of those minutes. Councillor Milligan and a seconder? Do I have a seconder for those? Thank you councillor Feckner. Any discussion on those minutes? Now I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand and it's unanimous. Thank you. We now move on to item 11.2, which is the confirmation of the special meeting, which is the budget meeting on the 24th of June. And I'll move those. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Cornselman. Is there any discussion or amendments for those minutes? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We now move on to item 12, which is the merrill minute and there is none. So we move on to item 13, which is business outstanding, including conduct matters and matters lying on the table to be dealt with. and matters lying on the table to be dealt with. And the matter that is outstanding for us is the matter that we had, I think, the G I W in regards to inland rail. So this report was considered the 24th of June Ordinary Council Meeting referred to today's meeting to provide additional opportunity for council to engage with key community representatives and council officers engaged with the local community and the response received outlined support for council's proposed submission to the Coordinated General. The community outlined that the proposed council submission adequately addressed the concerns of the Granchester community. I'll ask, I'll move this and ask for a seconder then we'll go into discussion because I know councillor Ireland, you asked for this to be moved to there. Do I have a seconder for that councillor Ireland? Thank you. I'll open up for discussion.
Thank you, mayor. I did put it on Facebook, our response, so that the general community through Granchester and Calvert and Willowbank could have a look at what we're proposing. And again, the main concern for them is the at-level crossing at Granchester. The number of trains that come through every half hour and the time it's going to take spices is at the top of the Granchester Mount Mort Road. And the number of vehicles that are going up there, it's increasing in popularity and they're building another recreational business. And so I'm with the residents that I don't think at-level crossings, that's the reports that are coming out across Queensland, that at-level crossings are dangerous and there's too many deaths. But I accept that, that we can't change what's going to happen. And I thank the officer who took the time to write the report and it was very encompassing of all the issues that have been raised so far. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ireland. Obviously the, this report is, is I guess council submission and we represent the residents. Are you satisfied that the level crossing issue is, is covered off well enough in this report?
They were all, the feedback I got was that they think that we've addressed it. The council has addressed it adequately. They're not happy that they're probably still going to be stuck with at-level crossings, but they're happy that we've put forward such strong arguments.
Thank you very much. Thank you councillor. Do we have a discussion?
This is my question, so thank you.
Councillor Madison?
I'll just reiterate what councillor Ireland said. There's a consistent stream of members of the public that notify us of the increased traffic on Granchester Mount Mort Road. I'm quite sure that some of them have made those representations to inland rail themselves. I'm just very hopeful that they are heard and listened to. And there's a lot of public concern in Granchester as well about the flood mapping that's been utilised because we've seen photographs from locals that they have from the floods and they're a bit higher than the mapping that inland rail's used. So I just, I hope that they listen on those two issues because the public's been pretty consistent about it. And they haven't, they've been quite open and blunt from day one about it, to be honest. So it's up to inland rail to react to the public comments and I look forward to them hopefully doing that.
Thank you councillor Madison. I guess we, we did some feedback and put a submission in recently for the, the Calvert to Keguru. So this is, there's, there's two parts of this in our, in our LGA, the Heladon to Calvert. I think our views have been very consistent, that we're not happy with the number of level crossings and all the flood mapping. And there also continues to be concern in our community about the noise attenuation. So I'm very, I'll be happy to support this, this particular report as our submission for inland rail. Councillor Feckner?
Just a question, we might need to defer to council officers with regards to this, but are we expecting a detailed response from ARTC with regards to our submission and addressing all of our concerns?
I'll call the relevant council officer to the lectern to, to show, tell us what the process is from here. Once we put the submission in, what's the process for the federal government?
Good morning, Richard Hancock. I'm the project manager for inland rail for council. The answer is yes, we are expecting feedback from ARTC on all the points we've put in submissions. And that's for the C2K EIS as well as the H2CEIS. Obviously they're large documents, so it's going to take the office of the coordinator general a while to put that feedback together. But we will get a response on all the points that we've submitted.
And will, will that be able to be published to the, the public as well as the, the feedback?
That I can't tell you. I'd have to check.
Okay, if I could put that as a question on notice.
Thank you.
Yeah, just with, just with regards through you, mayor, to that response. So the project keeps tracking, they continue to, you know, do their modelling and move forward with the project. So I guess, will, will they be treating these with a sense of urgency? You know, because it could be seen that they're, you know, if they're continuing work on things that we've expressed concern on, they could be seen to be ignoring the views of our officers and, and the really great technical advice that we've given them in these documents as well. So just wondering what the timeline looks like. Are they forging ahead and they'll worry about the, the comments later? Or, you know, are we in, in the project timeline? Is there enough time for them to give that feedback and address that and amend as they go forward?
Yeah. While they are forging ahead, the EIS is on the critical path. They can't acquire land and they can't start construction until they have EIS approval from the coordinator general. So it, they have to resolve these issues with council before they can start construction.
A question on page 92. The first thing that struck me was the carbon fuels and the arrangement.
Is that microphone?
On page 92, Mr Hancock, and thank you for this comprehensive report. I'm just surprised, are you surprised, rather, this is my question, that they fail to adequately address the utilisation of lower carbon fuels? You would think that that would be fundamental to the project.
I think, and council's made the point that it's not adequately addressed. The EIS is written by a consultant from a desktop who won't be building the project in the future. So I think there, there are lots of issues that they would prefer to push further down the, the project delivery track. And that's the kind of issue that they're, they'll say, we'll do the best we can, but we don't think the commitment they made was strong enough. I think that's the point of council's comment.
So is that consistent with the EIS for other sections of the line, do you think?
Certainly the Calvert to Keguru was similar. I haven't reviewed that for the, for the other two projects in this, this project delivery. But it, they were written by the same consultant, so I would expect so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr Hancock.
Thank you.
I'll open up for any further discussion. Thank you councillor Doyle.
I just have a quick comment. I just want to commend the council officers and councillors Madison and Ireland for their advocacy on this really important issue for, you know, the whole of our city, but in particular their, their residents. And as councillor Feckner and I know, when, when these tricky issues come up, it's really important that we step up as councillors and advocate for residents and, and help them articulate what their true concerns are. In these situations, there'll often be lots of objections being thrown around, but some of the, the critical ones may get lost in, in all the white noise. So to dig down and as councillor Ireland said, you know, even take the, the draft submission back to residents to health check. Well done. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Doyle. I concur with your thoughts. I was going to make a comment that I want to thank councillor Ireland and councillor Madison for attending the many community consultative committees that are happening for, for both sections of the inland rail and for going out of your way, I know consistently, and, and taking many calls and seeing residents one-on-one to make sure that their views are reflected in the submission that is before us today. Thank you very much. There's no other discussion. The recommendation is that council endorse the document detailed attachment one of the, of the report by the consultant for the inland rail dated the 8th of July 2021, which will form the submission to the coordinator general in response to the draft environmental impact statement for the Heladon to Calvert inland project. I've already moved it and councillor Ireland has seconded it. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item 14, which is the reception and consideration of committee reports. And the first of those is 14.1, the Growth and Infrastructure and Waste Committee. And the recommendation is that minutes of this meeting, which does have full, full delegation, that the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee of 2021/06, of the 8th of July 2021, be noted. And I'm moving that items one through to nine are moved as a batch and noted as a batch. May I have a seconder to that? Thank you councillor Kunselman. Any discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item number 14.2, which is the Governance and Transparency Committee. And the recommendation is that council adopt the recommendations of the Governance and Transparency Committee Report number 2021/06 of the 8th of July 2021. And I'll hand over to the chair of that committee for, for him to move it and any comments.
Thank you, mayor. I'd just recommend that we adopt that recommendation as is. We only had one matter on the agenda for that meeting and that was a matter on the table regarding the studiosity subscription renewal. And I think we'll go through that in the next governance and transparency meeting. So effectively, we didn't make a decision on anything at all. So I'd recommend we adopt the recommendation as is.
In the minutes, thank you very much councillor Madison. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you councillor Milligan. I'll open up for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item 14.3, which is that council adopts the recommendations of the Community Culture, Arts and Sports Committee Report number 2021/06 of the 8th of July 2021. There were six items in that. I'll hand over to the chair of that to move and give any highlights or discussion. Okay, I'd like to move that.
Thank you, mayor. My recommendation would be that we accept all of the recommendations made by our committee. I think that it's worth noting for the benefit of the group here today that we would be endorsing Friday, the 13th of May as the Ipswich Show holiday next year. And that's probably the biggest standout from the committee. We had community funding and support allocations and an update with regards to the new arts officer role who's already making inroads and doing a fantastic job with the indulgence of the group. I might just speak briefly to the success of the Spark Festival, the Reimagined Ipswich Festival. That was over the course of the last couple of weeks, a truly extraordinary effort by Ipswich City Events. I made it to almost every single Spark event over the course of the 11 days. And it was just an amazing way to see people interacting with our city. It was, it saw thousands of people across lots of different age groups. There were specific events targeting different demographics and I thought that worked really well from live music for the 18 plus right down to the Little Day Out celebration at Ripley Sunday just gone, which was an absolute hoot. And there were kids running wild and, and having a fantastic time. So I can't wait to see, you know, how we grow and build these events for next year. But I'm so proud to have been, you know, standing beside the Ipswich City Events team, delivering such wonderful events for our city. So congratulations to the team for their enormous effort. Spark Ipswich, and I can't wait to see what we do next year as well. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Feckner.
But.
I'll move you to discussion later, I'll just.
But yeah, so just moving to accept the recommendations of all of the items.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you councillor Kunselman. I now open up for discussion. I think councillor Ireland would like to make a comment.
Thank you, mayor. Councillor Madison and I went out to Peak Crossing to the event out there. It was raining, the ground was wet and damp. It was booked out and the kids were outside doing all of their circus hoole hoops and everything. But the inside show for parents was fully booked out and it was great to see the council had taken these events out, out to the edges of Ipswich for our residents that don't come in all the time during school holidays. So again, to the events team, it was wonderful and the people were very, the residents were very appreciative. And there were some comments that we didn't advertise it far and wide out there. And I did say that, well, it was an Ipswich event, you know, we weren't going to advertise it a lot in Scenic Rim, but it was well received. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ireland. Councillor Kunselman?
Similarly, mayor, for the event at Rosewood, which was packed out and much appreciated that we went to Rosewood rather than Rosewood having to come to us. And I can tell you that those clowns can tell you how to land on the floor of the Rosewood Cultural Centre safely.
Maybe we should have had it earlier councillor Kunselman. Thank you councillor Madison.
I'll just add in on the reports, I went along to the Little Day Out at Ripley Town Centre on Sunday and just thousands of kids and parents, very successful. Council officers have done a great job in setting up that, that event. I think it would be just natural to, to do it again. A lot of happy families and that's what it's about.
Thank you councillor Madison. Thank you for raising Spark.
Yeah, I just want to apologise to the group. I should have moved outside of standing orders to, to speak to Spark, but I think that for it to have happened organically like this is wonderful. And thanks for the other councillors for their support of Spark Festival.
Yeah, I think it's great. And the feedback and the, the number of, the foot traffic we saw with delight, you know, with the, the local artists' work being projected onto St Mary's. It was very lovely of the Catholic community to allow us to do that. Refraction along Bremmer River was just fantastic. And, and I thank Riverlink for, you know, being sponsor of that. And it was great to see people sitting on the terrace with their QR codes, ordering food, listening to the music was just phenomenal, as well as pixel on the admin building here. I didn't go to all the events councillor Feckner, like yourself, but I was out and about on the, the night they had the West of Waghorn. We had what, 16 live music acts on, from between Waghorn and, and West Street. And we actually couldn't get a parking spot, we had to circle around three times. And I think that was fantastic to see that, that it was so busy that night. And certainly went to the best of the British. It was my husband and I, our, our 16-year anniversary, I can't think of a better way. It was a really fun, fun way to celebrate our anniversary. It was a lovely, lovely night. And it was great to see the fact that we had events in Goodna, in Rosewood, in, in Peak Crossing, in Ripley, and not just the, the CBD. I think it was really great to, to see. We made sure that was something in every division. So any other discussion? No, I'll put item 14.3 to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. And now move on to item 14.4. And is that recommendation that council adopt the recommendations of the Economic and Industry Development Committee Report number 2021/06 of the 8th of July 2021. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see if they'd like to move both items together and if they would like to report any highlights.
Thank you. I would like to move both items together. I was absent and teleported in via the link in the computer system. So my councillor Madison did share that. So I don't have anything to add and would move it in batch. Do you have anything to add? So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have that seconded? May I have a second? Thank you councillor Madison. I'll open up for any discussion. There being no discussion, I'll move recommendation 4.4. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item 14.5. And is that council adopt the recommendations of the Environment Sustainability Committee Report number 2021/06 of the 8th of July 2021? And there are three items on that agenda. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how he would like that moved and, and any highlights.
Thank you, mayor. There were two items of new business at, at committee meeting, being the adoption of Ipswich City Council Environmental Oppsets Policy and the review of Local Disaster Management Plan 2021. I haven't been advised by any member of committee that. I haven't been advised by any member of committee that there's anything they wanted to discuss in this forum. So I'll move that as a batch, both items, together that be accepted.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Fekner. I'll now open it up for a discussion. Council Island?
Thank you, Mayor. It's not actually part of the report, but I'd like to thank the officer who came out to the Wags meeting to advise the members and all those present on how that's going to work from now on, how their money from tea trees will be spent and how they can see it on the transparency hub. So I think, I appreciate that he had to come out for a very long meeting. But thank you very much to the team for doing that.
Thank you. I think we'll pass it on to Mr Smith. Thank you very much, Council Island. I guess the only real comment I have on this one is probably the item two, which is the environmental impacts, so the environmental offsets policy and the real need that we have in our city to be a more contemporary city. We're one of the few councils, I think, in South East Queensland that don't have an environment offset policy. So it's really great to see us taking those steps, especially in regards to the new planning scheme that we're developing as well. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. I think we're up to item, the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee Solvers. Thank you, Council Madson. Thank you, Council Fekner. Thank you. Just note that Council Fekner and Councilor Madson have left the room. And we're up to item fourteen point six, which is that council adopt the recommendations of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee Report, number twenty twenty one oh six, of the eighth of July twenty twenty one. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee, Council Doyle, to see if she'd like to move those items in batch or separately and any highlights.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I recommend that we move to accept the recommendations in their entirety, noting that during committee, we had two officers' reports, one which related to the Nicholas Street Precinct, the Retail Subproject Committee update, as well as the Nicholas Street Precinct comms and engagement report. So I propose that we move them in their entirety. Just would like to make one small comment. In summary, during committee, we spoke to the fact that the two notable events with regard to the CBD redevelopment being the opening of this administration building. But what I see as a little bit more important than that, the children's library. And, you know, there's been lots of publicity and commentary around the opening of the children's library. And it has been a roaring success for those that were a little apprehensive about having a very separate bespoke children's library. It's absolutely stood on its own and spoke for itself. And certainly, that was the intention behind the administrator's decision to create the dedicated children's library here, that it would activate this space and become a place of destination. And we've now got evidence that we're getting lots of visitors from outside the city. So that's fantastic for our business community as well.
Thank you, Council Doyle. Do I have a second? Thank you, Council Milligan. I'll open it up for discussion. And I guess I'll concur with you, Councilor, the Ipswich Children's Library has been a phenomenal success, obviously just in the school holidays, but outside school holidays. At the launch, we had library teams from other councils, I won't name where they are, but they certainly were so impressed. And they're going back to their councils and asking if they can do the same. It's a really great way forward, especially for a city that has so many young people as well, and so many young families. Thank you. Any other discussion? Nope. I'll then move fourteen point six. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. I'll just wait for Councilor Fekner and Madson to come back in. Welcome back, Council Fekner and Councilor Madson. We'll now move on to item fifteen point one, which is the CEO's Organizational Performance Report for June. And the recommendation is that the report be received and contents noted. So I'll move that. Do I have a second for that, Councilor Milligan? Thank you. I'll hand over to the CEO to provide any highlights for us from the report.
Thank you, Mayor. And councillors, I would just like to highlight in particular the end of financial year result for council, this being the organizational performance report for June. The position financially has been fully assessed and is in detail in a later report on the agenda today, as you're aware. However, I would like to thank the organisation for all of their work to deliver ultimately a deficit, which was significantly less than that which was forecast. So two point three million compared to a budgeted deficit of six point three. So while we certainly want to support you as a council to move into a surplus position, I thank once again the organisation for managing responsibly as we could in the circumstances to deliver that end of year position. Also, of course, to highlight the Infrastructure and Environment Department's performance in the month of June. As our acting GM of that department had been indicating, they were very much ramping up project delivery. So to deliver sixteen point six million dollars in capital works in the month of June even exceeded their expectations of what they projected. So they are indeed a very proud team, and we thank them as well. And as once again will be highlighted in months to come, we're geared up to deliver. And as we are well into July already, the delivery is continuing, not at that rate, but certainly at a healthy rate in July. And we intend that to continue each month of this financial year. Also, just wanted to highlight our safety performance. While we did very unfortunately have two incidents in the month of June, we're still tracking well below averages, industry averages. And we continue to keep a strong focus on the safety and wellbeing of our workforce. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Acting CEO. I'll now open the matter up for any questions or discussion. Yes, Council Madson?
I'll just make a comment. The item there listed under current significant matters, the council completed works on the Red Bank Plains Recreation Reserve. As you know, we were there yesterday, Mayor, with Council Island and the Member for Bundamba, Lance McCallum, MP. And the work done is just exceptional. Lots of kids and families there playing on the equipment. It's just good, modern playground equipment. And thanks to the state government for the funding that we secured to do that. And the Member for Bundamba for his advocacy for the people of Red Bank Plains.
I concur with you, Council Madson. That was a two million dollar project that was designed by council as well, and as well as built it. And one point eight million dollars of that came from the state government. So that's, very grateful for the advocacy of Lance McCallum, the Member for Bundamba. No other comment? No, thank you very much for this operational report, Acting CEO. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We're moving over to item fifteen point two, provisional projects. And the recommendation is that council review the provisional projects identified in attachment two of this report and determine which of these are to proceed to the next stage of project development. And just before we go into that, I think I'd just like to explain that this is, I guess, a new system. When we were doing our budget deliberations last year, we found that obviously as we were putting money aside for our capital works budget, which obviously locks in projects for three years. And if we just had smaller projects, like wanting to move a park bench or erect a fence or do something for community safety, or look at a study or something like that, we really didn't have a lot of flexibility having a three year capital works programme. And we want to be very open and transparent in how we do that and how we respond to residents. So we set aside half a million dollars for provisional projects. The policy is been online since December last year, when that policy was approved at council. And this is the first time we're actually going through that list to say, hey, these are things that we wish to add to that as well. So this will be the first time we're going through this, and I'm looking forward to it. And I know that there's one amendment, I think, Council Island, you wanted to add one. So I'll add that as part of the recommendation. Yeah, that's okay. So the list that we do have here, I mean, I think there's been an update in our page. But we basically have, for Division One, the handball courts at Rex Hawks Park at Red Bank Plains. Council, and I'm going to move this as part of the motion, to undertake a master plan for the Cunyana Heritage Centre. So we'll ask a council officer on what they think that cost will be. Division Two have asked for a smiley face sign on Red Bank Plains Road near Shiloh Church, and flashing light warning signs along this. And also Britain Roads Reserve upgrade to include a cricket pitch. Division Three have put forward a Maculada family park review for privacy measures and further park embellishments. Keith Pennell Park in North Beval, park embellishments and lighting. Sealy Street, Silkstone, embellishments and lighting. And then CBD streetscape and beautification programme. And Division Four have put forward a beautification at the corner of Fitzgibbon and Downstreets, North Ipswich, to reflect the era. For example, a silhouette of Steam Train erected in this corner, leading down to the railway workshops. Another idea would be to paint a mural on the wall of old Ipswich House. So I know that some TMR land and state lands, we'll have to work through that. So I'll move that those projects are put forward. And if I can have a second, then we can go into discussion. So I'll move that. And Council Doyle has a second to it. And would each division like to speak to their projects? Doyle, I'll start with Division One.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for adding the project to undertake a master plan for Cunyana Heritage Centre. It's been a long time. Everybody's been saying it's someone else's responsibility. So it will be good to be able to give them some certainty down there on what we're going to do or what they will have to do to undertake their part of it as well. And for our handball courts, I guess we get, do you want to speak to that one?
In regards to the handball courts, I'm aware that the comments there suggest that it's not in line with the DSS for a local park and would be considered an over embellishment. This idea for handball courts was put forward to me by a resident who takes his kids to the park pretty regularly. And there's just overcrowding. There's a lot of people using the park. So I, you know, I don't claim to say that we should go against those recommendations for a local park. But if it's being used, I think that it's worth looking at.
Thank you, Council Madson. I note that obviously we have over four hundred parks, so we have a certain standard. And obviously, it's, we need to look at each one individually. Thank you. I'll go to Division Two, if you'd like to speak to the projects that you've put forward.
Yes, Mayor, I'll just say a few words in relation to that. And this comment relates to all three issues. One's the speed advisory sign proposed on Red Bank Plains Road near the Shiloh Church at Goodna. And the other two in relation to flashing lights on the floodway on Jones Road at Belbert Park, and also the Britons Road Reserve. I support each of those strongly. And there are very negative comments on all three. There's no specific subprogramme. Well, maybe there should be. These are significant issues that have come up through the community. And even the feedback that I continue to get in relation to the speed advisory signs is very strong. The floodway on Jones Road at Belbert Park near Catandra at Crescent, it was in two thousand and eighteen. A woman was trapped by rising floodwaters and managed to rescue her three children, young children, under the age of seven, I think all three of them, single-handedly from the floodway. I think that's important to have those flashing signs there, particularly at night where the floodwater can come up very, very quickly. The one in relation to Britain's Road Reserve intrigues me. Again, this mirrors the comment that Councilor Madson raised about, you know, classification of parks. But what concerns me the most is that it says, it should be noted that just north of the reserve in the Goodna is the Goodna Pony Club. Well, the Red Bank Plains Pony Club, Red Bank Plains Goodna Pony Club closed some ten years ago and hasn't used that reserve at all. And the community is asking for it to be embellished. And I've put this proposal forward for some time. In fact, I saw an excellent example of that out on Moghl Road at Moghl in the Brisbane City Council area, where there's a white picket fence, a community cricket oval. And I think a community reserve there, because it's rather flat land naturally, because it was originally the Pony Club land, I think it's a really good area to bring that community, you know, together. There's a walkway through there, already a concrete walkway on the eastern side of Woolgroo Creek to enable children and others to get through to the Augusta State School. So I would really like to see that developed as a reserve. It's still a park, and it would be used informally as a local community cricket oval.
Just to add to that, Mayor, I've received a lot of feedback from the community about a lack of cricket fields in our division. So we have sporting fields and tennis courts and some basketball courts. But then cricket is lacking, and it's a very popular sport. The field embellishments seem to be easy to maintain and family-friendly as well. So when they're not actually using them for sporting days, you know, they're open fields for picnicking and quite aesthetically pleasing. So, yeah, I fully support that provisional project as well.
Thank you. I just want to note that the council office are giving advice based on the, I guess, the, how we structured our four hundred parks. You know, we have the different categories of parks. So I guess that's their job to give that advice. May I just check something with the Acting CEO? In the right-hand column, it says currently underway. So is that all the costings and the workings for that?
Yes, that's the assessment of the costs.
Okay. May I ask, when will we have that? Because if we're making a decision, we need to know the cost.
We'll need to ask Mr Madigan.
So may I ask Mr Madigan to come to the lectern, please?
Shaun Madigan, Acting General Manager of Infrastructure and Environment.
Thank you very much. Mr Berry, the three projects for Division Two, when will we have some costings and some, I guess, some comments on that?
We would expect to have those back at different times. So the smiley face on Red Bank Plains Road, we should have that back within around about a week's time. The remaining two, a little bit more investigation, but certainly within the next couple of weeks, we would have those done. So two weeks would be about the maximum timeframe to have the costings on all of those.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr Madigan.
Sorry.
Yep. Sorry, the other, are there any other questions, Mr Madigan?
Yeah, thank you. Just in relation to that third one, the Red Bank Plains, oh, Britain's Road Reserve, would you be able to come back to myself and Councilor John, so that if any costings are done, it's taking into account exactly what we have in mind for that development? It's not just open-ended, it's for a specific purpose. And also raise with your staff the issue that the Pony Club hasn't been there for ten years.
Yep, certainly. I don't know whether they're indicating there that that, is the land still there that the Pony Club was on? And its designation is as a sports reserve, and what they're saying is...
Well, it says it should be noted that just north of the reserve is the Goodna Pony Club.
Yeah, so all they pointed out was that that particular land, as it's classified under our sporting reserve and park designation, would be suitable for a cricket field. They're just pointing that out as another option as well for a cricket facility in that particular division.
Yeah, I think the way it reads, I think it's still a Pony Club land.
I just threw you, Mayor, and a question for Mr Madigan. Do you envisage this list will grow beyond the five hundred thousand dollars that we have allocated to the provisional projects?
It potentially will over the course of the year. You know, everything's... Everything's pretty costly to do, it adds up very quickly across a city of this size. What we are looking at however is, see, a number of these particular types of projects do get raised by sporting clubs and the like direct to council over the course of a year. And I want to say council, council as an organisation through a service request or through liaison with our sporting rec teams. We're looking at putting in a governance process by which those projects that fit within, you know, a DSS or the sort of council policies and infrastructure programmes can be added in over the course of the year. So there will be things in the capital programme, like netting at sports fields and bits and pieces that arise in the course of the year. They're brought forward to the organisation direct from sporting clubs. As distinct from these ones that are being put forward by the divisional councillors following consultation with the sporting clubs. That is sort of the, I suppose, area that this particular policy and these projects cover. There is then a separate process to be put in place where a sports club or a community group comes to us with an additional project and how that actually gets into our capital programme and funded. That is a little bit of a gap in the capital programme bill, but it's something we're working out on the moment and we'll bring it forward to council to ensure that we have proper governance around that in the coming months.
So I, yeah, thank you for the answer to that. And I think that it would probably be the will of the group, and I will defer to any councillor who wishes to comment on this, that at least these projects are scoped. If we can't afford them in the provisional projects budget for this financial year, that at least the monies be allocated to scoping these projects in case we have grant opportunities come up. And we have projects that are, you know, for lack of a better phrase, shovel-ready to go. So that we can put these forward and potentially get funding for these projects as well. So just making it clear, that's my view, that if all of these projects are unable to be funded in the provisional projects $500,000 allocation, that at least the planning is done for those and a follow-up report comes back to the group. So that we can clearly identify which projects will be funded this year and which projects will have to be deferred or looked at to move to a different programme if that is applicable.
I think my question to Mr Madigan would be the fact that so far, this list is over 500,000, it's 513,000. And that doesn't include the exact cost of the treescape, because I don't know how many trees. It doesn't include the Cunyana Master Plan, all the projects for Division Two, so we're already over the half a mil. So I guess that's where we'll have to, do you have any suggestions for that or during discussion?
I do have a question. What is the proposed start time for some of these projects? My expectation, certainly when the provisional projects category was created many months ago. And it was why councillor Fekner and I were very motivated to get the detail and submitted our projects back then. So it was my expectation that these would get underway very soon in the new financial year. So I'm not entirely satisfied that we're going to hit the pause button or be delayed in the commencement of some of these because there's been late projects added or questions raised. So was it always the intention, new financial year, we'd get some of these projects up and running?
That's correct, councillor, this is why I put this report through to the council meeting. If we get these projects signed off and commence to the next stage, then we can certainly deliver them this financial year in accordance with the $500,000 budget.
I think we'll have to have that in discussion, yeah. Any other questions of Mr Madigan? Thank you, Mr Madigan. We now move into discussion for these projects. And I do note that some of the divisions have had projects sitting there, I think since January or just end of last year. And we've had one just come through today. At the moment, as I said, the budget, we've already, it was already, the costs so far are 513,000. And that doesn't include the tree scapeing, the Cunyana Master Plan, all the projects from Division Two. So I'm open to suggestions how we want to do this, are there some that we wish to proceed with? And, or are there some that we would go to scoping with councillor Doyle?
I'd just like to point out, we, within Division Three, had four items. The fourth one was the CBD Treescape and Beautification Programme. I'll just have to get councillor Fekner's thoughts around whether he's in agreeance. But I propose that that one be excluded, noting that just general beautification has occurred around the CBD, as it has across the whole of Ipswich. I note, we had the information recently that our maintenance crews have had, have a little bit more time on their hands now that it's winter and the grass isn't growing as quickly, so they're moving to some beautification and general tidying. So on that basis, I'd be happy to exclude that item.
Thank you.
I think I was the seconda.
Yes, I moved it and councillor Doyle was the seconda. So that's that tree scapeing. Thank you.
And if I could just generally speak to the motivation for our other three projects, they are parks. And note council officers' comments that, you know, they're embellishments and they may not necessarily be in accordance with, you know, our park structures. So firstly, I'd like to address Maculada Family Park in Riverview. That suburb is very close to the heart of councillor Fekner and I, we work very, very close with that community. That park is very tired, some of the embellishments need work. It has been explained to us that that park is a safe place for many of the children living around there. When there's domestic violence issues going on in the home, it is the place that the children can escape to. And in addition to that, we had a mother speak to us very passionately that she has limited resources as a single mother and therefore can't take the children out for dinner or to the movies. Their outing is to use the barbecues, have a sausage sizzle and play in the park. Feel very passionate about that one, we're not asking for much, just a little bit of TLC and additional embellishments. For example, a set of monkey bars. There is mention of some trees. I'm of the view that 85,000 is excessive and it won't need that amount of money spent on the trees. There is a particular resident that has privacy issues and very valid privacy issues. A whole line of trees died, exposing his house to people in the park. So he'd just like to see some trees planted so they can begin to mature. We don't necessarily need completely mature plants going there, so I think we might save some money. The other two parks, North Beval and Silkstone, again, the motivation behind that, safety issues. The key request there was for lighting. Both parks are used regularly by community members. And just in relation to Sealy Street, I want to touch on councillor Johnick's comment around the cricket nets. Ipswich community, we are mad, passionate cricket families, there's lots of us, mine included. And on any given day, families can go searching for nets to train their kids in, dads regularly take the kids to the park. And sometimes those nets that are already there in our parks are subject to exclusive use agreements with cricket organisations and they might be locked up. We need more public cricket nets, something I'd like to explore. Specific requests came from residents in Sealy Street. So maybe the cricket nets, you know, need to be parked while we explore that as a long-term solution. But that's the summary of why our projects were put forward, thank you.
Councillor, councillor Fekner, just to look at the three projects there. And obviously, Maculada, which I know you're very passionate about, those 10 trees were costing $85,000. But the embellishments is 150,000, those three parks, the proposed cost is 150,000 for each one of them, so that's 450,000. So I guess I'll go to you, asking, would you be able to prioritise?
Well, Mayor, I would actually propose that the lighting be prioritised for those two parks, being North Beval and Silkstone. That's $100,000 in total there. Embellishments can come later as we start to discuss, you know, the rules and governance around that. Maculada Park, like I said, the $150,000 for embellishments and $85,000 for the trees, I think that's excessive. And certainly the embellishments, the information I've given to council officers when they requested that the types of embellishments, well, yeah, I can't really comment. But yeah, propose that in relation to the North Beval and Silkstone, certainly, just the lighting be made a priority. Which is about $110,000. And then Maculada Park.
There's not a high level of specificity here. And probably speaking to councillor Tully's comments, we would like to be consulted before any further scoping works are done on these projects. So potentially on a divisional basis, we meet with the General Manager of Infrastructure and Environment to really dive down into the detail of this, to really, so that the views of the community are really captured, you know, in the projects that actually get up and across the line. And I thank councillor Doyle for her comments, these are three well-used parks in our division. You know, as evidenced by, you know, us going out and visiting these residents. And, you know, particularly Maculada Park has had issues that need to be resolved. You know, and we're prepared to work with IED to get this over the line. So maybe, you know, it's difficult when these high-level costs are here in front of us. And I get that it's difficult to speak to the detail of the projects. But I think that it's definitely worthwhile that we, as the divisional councillors, are consulted with. Just to give it a health check to see if the ideas and thoughts of our community are truly represented in the projects that end up coming to light. So might propose an amendment that...
I was going to make a suggestion, because obviously part of this provisional project for my amendment, councillor Fekner, is to get this done this financial year. So I'm thinking there might be some things that we could say, yes, please proceed. And there'll be some things we'll say, well, let's come back next month after some discussion. So at this stage, I'm looking at that 46,000 for the handball courts at Rex Hawks Park. I guess we need to decide, Maculada, it's looking like each tree's costing 8,500, I think I'm in the wrong business.
I'm happy to purchase the trees, Mayor.
And install them. So I guess I'm open to you at what you would like to do, where you would have put a dollar amount there, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner. But obviously...
Okay, you know, let's park the tree issue to the side for the moment. And that's something that can happen going forward, because we absolutely need to investigate. I'm not sure council officers, we're on the same page as to the size and type of trees. So if we're prepared to park that one, then it would be the $150,000 towards embellishments.
So you're saying that you'd like the 150,000?
Yes.
Embellishments? We're looking just the lighting for the...
But so, sorry, through you, Mayor, open for discussion and debate. If somebody else has put forward a project and they've been scoped and they've done the work and it's ready to go, happy to have the debate, what's the priority?
Sure, what I would like to do is just sort of flesh out what that would be, what would potentially be changing this recommendation to be. So if it's 150,000 of Maculada Family Park, 33,000 for Keith Pennell Park for the lighting. And noting that you'll do additional work on that embellishment. For Sealy Street, 77,000 for the lighting, that pathway there. The beautification on the corner of Fitzgibbon and Downstreet, there's a 17,000 for that. I'll just add that up quickly to see what value is. That's a total of 323,000. So based on the discussion we've got here today, I'd like to propose an amendment to the recommendation. Is that the provisional projects that we approve, the 46,000 for the handball courts at Rex Hawks Park, 150,000 for the Maculada Family Park, 33,000 for the Keith Pennell Park for the lighting, 77,000 for the Sealy Street Park there for lighting, 17,000 for the beautification on the corner. And that's a total of 323,000. Knowing that we still have then, you know, 180, 70,000 dollars to look at how that would be spent on Division Two projects as they come through. Also for the Cunyana Master Plan. I'll move that as an amendment. And I'll just, I'll just move that as an amendment, as the mover, as the seconda. Councillor Doyle, I'm just moving that, I'll have that for discussion.
So I don't agree with that calculation because there was comments made about other councillors putting the work in on a scheduled timeframe. This was a new system that we were all basically practising in, that feedback was missed for certain divisions. And I don't see why my community should be penalised for that and half of the budget be going to one division in particular.
Thank you councillor John, councillor Madison.
Yeah, I'd just like to address the things councillor and Iland and I put forward a lot more projects, but they were knocked out as not provisional because they were under different programmes. Particular things like a connection across the creek, connecting Hallets Road through to Greenwood Village. Yeah, up to Rice Road, so a footpath connection, that was knocked back because it wasn't in ATAP. And anyway, it's not going to be funded through that ATAP programme for some time, but it's not provisional. So we put forward projects, a heap of them were knocked back. What we have here, I'd actually appreciate having a bit more consultation, a bit more work done on what the specific costings are. I know that it seems to cost government more money to do things. I was daydreaming the other night. I've moved into a property where I have enough space to potentially build my own basketball court, that's a dream that I have. And some of the costings I was looking at online, like it's, it would be like 90,000 to build my own concrete basketball court with hoops and screens and stuff. And it's going to cost us 46,000 for handball courts. I need more detailed costings before I am willing to commit to any sort of budget expenditure today. I just think that we've got to dot I's and cross T's. That's what the public want us to do. And in regard to some of these other projects, I would, I would say that councillor Johnick and councillor Tully, this administration building isn't the most convenient place for them to do their work as representatives of the eastern suburbs of Ipswich. So it's a real thing, their availability to talk with offices isn't as strong as other divisions. So I would very much like to see their projects be assessed before we make any citywide strategic decisions on this matter.
To you, Mayor, and as the Chair of this meeting, you cut me off when I was trying to make an amendment earlier. That probably would have solved this issue, so I will go back to moving that amendment, if you'd let me make that amendment this time. So I'm proposing that we move an amendment, and speaking to councillor Tully's point earlier, that the divisional councillors be consulted by the Infrastructure and Environment Department Manager by no later than 31 July to talk about the specific scoping of the projects that we have put forward for the provisional project listing.
May I ask councillor, if you could have the councillors and the mayor consulted?
Yep.
Councillor Fekner's moved that, do we have a...
I know, it just needs to be, if the mover and the seconda agree.
I'm okay with that. Councillor Doyle? Councillor Doyle?
I agree with that.
Now, our tech isn't all up to 100% yet because we lived in this building three months earlier. Now, our tech isn't all up to one hundred percent yet because we lived in this building three months early. So I'm going to have to squint to ask Vicky to show me her screen to read out that. Thank you. Oh, thank you very much. So the variation is that division councils and the mayor be consulted by the L E D manager by no later than the thirty-first of July to discuss the specific scoping of projects. Put forward for the provisional project listing, um, as the mover, I've accepted that and councillor Doyle, as the seconder has agreed to that. Is there any other discussion on this particular?
I'd just like to make the comment, ma'am, that, um, within government all levels, um. Things do tend to happen slowly. Uh, this provisional project, uh, item. Um, was an opportunity, um, for us as councillors, uh, to get these projects underway. Far sooner than they would being on the three-year capital works project. So, um, I implore my fellow councillors to, um. Make, um, this particular work a priority over the next four weeks so we can get the projects underway. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any other discussion? No? Oh, councillor Mulligan?
Thank you, mayor. If, uh, I may, I'll just, uh, speak to, uh, Division Four's, uh, input to, um, provisional projects. That being that councillor Kunsmann and I also had a, an extensive list, uh, that we talked to IED and, uh, in consultation. With the management there, uh, it was identified that all but one would, would fall, uh. Into other subprograms as other councillors have, have experienced, uh, of course. I understand, uh, with, uh, good governance, that is how that, uh, should be managed and, and handled and, and accept that, uh. Uh, some of the particularly larger items, that's where they belong. Um, with respect to, uh. Some of those items, uh, one example is, uh, ball catch nets at Enzack Park at, uh, Rosewood. Uh, but, uh, due to the, uh, the diligence and good work of, uh, the operational, uh. Side of council that, uh, has already been, uh, underway and, and is almost completed or coming up to completion. With respect to the one, so that left us with one item left, which was, uh. Brought to councillor Kunsmann and myself by a community member who owns and operates a, a business at that, uh, intersection of Down Street. And Fitzgibbon Street, uh, North Ipswich. Uh, she's, um, actually located on the northwest corner. And, uh, has interacted with her, her neighbours and, and other locals, um, viewing that North Ipswich is a, uh, particularly a, a, a precinct of its own. Um, we would all be aware that along, um, Down Street itself, there are business premises along there. And that, uh, heading in the outbound direction from the CBD, uh, that Fitzgibbon may be a, uh, uh, is utilized by. Uh, people as the entry point to the railway workshops museum. And, uh, she. Requested that we highlight some of our city's history, um, with the proposal there. Uh, two or three items that she, she had raised was the, um, place, placement of, uh, similar, um. erection that is also around the, the other areas, uh, being, uh, the silhouette of a steam train. Um, she also alluded to, um, maybe a, um, bicycle, um. Alluding to the local, the future locality of the Brussel Bike Way there. And also highlighted that across the road on the northeastern corner is, uh, a building that still has it, uh, listed on, on the gable as Ipswich House. Uh, she informed me that that was the first, uh, movie theatre, uh, in Ipswich. Uh, others, uh, would probably know the location as being the operation of a cafe, uh, operated by one Jimmy Wah. Uh, of which many Ipswich locals would, would know and may have been customer thereof. And that the, uh, building is, uh, and the property is still in the family. Uh, and it was identified that, uh, maybe placing a mural on that building. Due to it being private property, uh, is not something that council could undertake, but I'm sure that we could have that discussion with the property owner, uh, if they so choose. So. Uh, the, the scoping that came through, um, high-level costing for that project, uh, which is the only one for Division Four, come in at seventeen thousand, which is a. Very, very small percentage of the five hundred thousand. Um, that's, uh, where, uh, as a division we have landed. Uh, councillor Kunsmann and I are absolutely acceptable to the, the, the fact that, uh, all, all our others were, um, covered by other subprograms.
Thank you, councillor Mulligan. There's no more discussion. I'll put the variation to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you very much. I think probably one thing I've left for this, maybe we need to workshop the, um, provisional project before it comes to council. That's something we can discuss later. Um, fifteen point three is the monthly financial performance report. And that recommendation is that the report on. Council's financial performance for the period ending the thirtieth of June, twenty twenty-one. Uh, submitted in accordance to section two O four of the Local Government Regulation twenty-two will be considered and noted, uh, by council. I will move that. Do I have a second for that report? Thank you, councillor Fekner. Would anyone, I'll ask the relevant council officer to elect him, please.
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Jeff Keach, our chief financial officer.
Just distinctly, CFO, um, if you could just give us a, uh, the highlights of the, I guess, the end of the financial year.
Sure. Thank you, ma'am. Um, as mentioned before by, by the acting CEO. Um, when we're looking at our final result, if we, if you remember through the year, we, um, incurred some costs associated with refinancing the ICP load. Which was about four million dollars worth of interest. If we exclude that out of our operating position as a sort of one-off, we're at a deficit of two point three million dollars compared to what would have been the budget at six point four. Overall, that gives us an operating deficit if we include that interest charge of, uh, six point three million dollars compared to a, a deficit forecast at ten point five. So that's very positive in that space. Um, what I would note for, for, for yourselves would be a lot of the driver behind that additional, um, uh, better position in terms of the deficit was in relation to additional revenue. You would note in the report that there's additional, uh, fees and charges revenue and also some other revenues received. As well as, um, uh, an underspent in relation to our materials and services of about a million dollars. Highlighting a, a couple of key points. Obviously, um, if I just run through quickly some of the expenditure items. Um, our wages is, was about six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars over budget, primarily driven by a note in there around some termination costs associated with some restructures going through the organisation. Uh, that went through in June. Uh, so excluding those, we would have been, um, under our amended budget that was, was put through for by council in February. And, um, when we're looking at our materials and services, as we discussed at the last council meeting. Councillors, uh, incurred some significant legal costs associated with our planning and environment court matters over the last couple of months. So. Um, whilst we're still under on materials and services, we have actually, um, covered off through that an additional one point eight million dollars. Uh, worth of legal costs in the current financial year. And I would point and note to that 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 was obviously a carried, carrying forward risk for council as we get into the new financial year as those. As those costs and those cases continue through. Um, so that's really where we ended up in terms of that. Our rates revenue was very close to on budget. Our growth numbers, uh, were pretty well in line with our forecast that we made at last time from there, which has obviously been reduced a little bit. Um, as a result of COVID impacts over the last eighteen months. Um, I guess just picking up, ma'am, if you'd like, on, on the capital side, um. The comments made before also in relation to our IED, which is primarily our largest capital budget area, um, had a significant spend in the month of, of June and. And ended up slightly over budget, um, overall in terms of their dollars spent. Um, we are under in relation to our capital, uh, expenditure by, uh, by around about nineteen million, but as the mayor and councillors are aware. We've had some, um, delays in relation to the retail space on the CBD and that's primarily what's driving that. So. Um, as we go forward with the discussions, uh, in relation to the CBD development on the, on the retail space. Um, we've obviously got money in the current budget for that. And if further money's required during the year, we've got some carryover associated with that thing. Um, so they're probably the major highlights, uh, mayor and, and councillors. And if they're happy to take any questions or discuss it in any further detail.
Um, yes, uh, Mr. Keach, um, I note with the depreciation, um. It's, it's higher than, than budgeted, the one point nine million. I know part of that is playground equipment. Is that because we receive parks from developers, um.
Yes, so we.
Over embellishing, so that's now an expense on our, on us?
Yeah, whether they're over embellished or not, I, I'd have to look into the detail. I guess one of the questions, but that can be the cause of it, absolutely. We, if you did notice, our donated assets was significantly over budget by about thirty million dollars. So we had budgeted around about the sort of seventy odd and we've come in at about a hundred million. That's great. We've, we've got more assets in that space, but you're right, that does incur additional depreciation and maintenance costs as we move forward in relation to that. Sometimes that is just offsetting the fact that we otherwise would have received cash contributions. But the developers are now, uh, developing those assets instead of what would have otherwise been contributions required. To council to build those assets ourselves in accordance with our, um, infrastructure plans. Uh, but yes, depreciation's also been driven by that, but we've also started to bring on, um, and it will continue to rise just for the committee and council's perspective. You know, as we bring on the, the Tomma Place and, and the new libraries and the new administration buildings, they will increase our depreciation expenses as we go forward. Um, in those areas. So there was bringing on some of those additional assets that did increase depreciation. And also if you remember during the year, go back twelve months ago, we had some revaluations of some of our other assets. Which, um, which resulted in higher depreciation coming through this year because of the revaluation this time last year.
Thank you. Councillor Fekner?
Just a question about donated assets and long-term financial forecasting that we do.
Yeah.
In addition to developer, developer contributions that are made to council.
Yep.
Through over the course of, um, the development, um. Are you of the opinion as the CFO that those costs, the, the, the costs to the, the future asset rehabilitation that's needed is actually covered by. Um, the contributions? Um, are, are we in a sustainable position or are we taking on more assets than we can actually afford to maintain within the long-term financial forecasting?
Quite a complex question there to, to respond to. So I'll make some, some general comments if that's okay, councillor Fekner. Um, the contributions and, and the planning officers may correct me if I'm, I'm slightly wrong. Uh, the contributions that we receive and the assets we receive are primarily for the construction of the asset or for the asset itself. So council will either receive. Um, cash contributions for us to have an obligation to complete the infrastructure under our local government infrastructure plan. Or we'll receive the donated assets for what would be often said the infill, the, the, not the trunk infrastructure. But the normal infill, you know, roads and parks as part of a, a development. They are just the construction costs of the assets. We don't receive contributions for. The ongoing maintenance from the developers in that space, and that's not part of the calculation of the developer contribution. What I would say in that's funded from is, I guess, when you have the development, you have additional rates and revenue and growth. So the idea of the maintenance and the ongoing, that those would be aimed to be funded by. The additional rates revenue that is generated by having that additional, additional growth in that space. But the obligation to replace those and to maintain those comes over to council. Um, and is not sort of as part of the infrastructure calculations under the maximum allowable charges for developers.
So the, yeah, collection of, of the rates, um, do you see that, um, you know, that, that is actually paying to maintain those, those assets? Being born. And I know that this isn't an issue that's specific to Ipswich. I know that it's a, a local government issue, but, you know, this, the openness rule that exists. The, the, um, the immediate covering, um, you know, of the costs, um, you know, associated with current rehabilitation needs. By rates in newer areas that don't necessarily need rehabilitation. Um, you know, Ipswich is a very fast-growing place. So this is not really a concern, uh, for a council of today, but particularly moving forward into the future, how do we start to mitigate some of these risks? When development starts to slow down, we're not taking on as many, you know, ratepayers in, in the ratepayer base. How do we then afford, you know, in the long-term financial forecast to sustain the city and its assets?
Yep. The key part of that, I would say, is our, is our forward planning and modeling. Um, so that's the alignment and the key alignments between our asset management planning. And what that's telling us and when we need to intervene. But you're absolutely correct. In the early days, we will receive the revenue, but often the maintenance costs and the replacement don't come until. Fifteen, twenty, fifty years later in that space. So a key part of it is our forward forecasting and modeling. And making sure that as we start to, um, model our sustainabilitys and, and look at those pressures. That we set the appropriate rates revenue and manage our costs associated with those in the, in the long term. So it is an ongoing pressure that local government face. Um, we are primarily an infrastructure-heavy. Organisation and that's, that's local government in, in one of our key areas, which is why we have key requirements around. Our, um, asset sustainabilitys and, um, looking at our asset management planning and building all that into our forecast. So you can make informed decisions now. Around what levels of revenues, um, are, are required to maintain those assets going forward for both the community now, but also the community in the future. But it is a, it is a pressure that, that we will face more and more as some of those assets become older. And we then have to look at how do we replace and sustain those. And you bring into play all the aspects around, um, you know, funding of your debt levels and just. And driving surpluses. So one of the key things for us is a discussion that we've had through the budget process is, yes, we're running some small deficits now. But the key focus for us is to move into a surplus position. So you can start to manage some of those, um. Manage some of those pressures as they come on forward in the future. Uh, I know it's very hard to do specifically, but it's quite a complex question in managing. But it is an ongoing pressure for councils to face as they bring that significant infrastructure on board and the obligations transfer over to council.
Yeah, and thanks for your commentary around it. I think it's really important for us to think about financial sustainability and security for the future of our city. You know, particularly thinking about the growth at Ripley Way and, you know, and the implementation of a new planning scheme. Uh, I think it's important to incentivize the right kind of development, um, and at the right pace. Just because the state government told us that our population is going to double within X amount of years. Doesn't mean that that's necessarily a target that we need to be aspiring to here. I think that. We do need to just take a deep breath and think about our financial sustainability and think about sustainable development. And, you know, how the city grows around that. I mean, like I said earlier, it's, it's not going to affect us in our lifetime, probably because of the projected growth. And, and, you know, that artificially or, or not, or covering the costs of, of rehabilitation of current assets. But, you know, in twenty and thirty years' time, um, we, we need to, we need to set ourselves up. So surplus position. Um, is important and we can't just keep expecting the ratepayers to, you know, you know, a two, two and a half, three, four, five, fifteen percent rate increase. Um, just to cover the bad mistakes of our financial planning. So it's something that I'm, you know, particularly concerned about and something that it's the front of my mind. And. Thank you for your comments around that. I think it's a really good education piece to be aware of, um, coming into the new financial year.
Yeah, absolutely. And just a, a thought I'll come in that, and, and one which was discussed heavily by yourselves through the budget process and reiterate is. You might, you don't look at one year in isolation. You know, budgets in council are often looking at one year ahead. That whole idea of long-term forecasting and forwarding. So that, that requirement for us to adopt the ten-year forecast and in your discussions that you had and. And appreciate the input of yourselves through the budget process where you did consider. And we presented through to you not only the decisions that you make now, but what are the implications of those decisions in our modeling for the next ten years. So. I would continue to, to support you in wanting to make sure that that's as part of our discussions. We just don't look at decisions in isolation for one year now. And when we start to make decisions on investment, we look at what we refer to as a whole of life cost. Not just the capital cost of constructing something, what is the whole of life of maintaining that and replacing that. And if those sorts of things are coming forward to you in discussions and business cases. Then my view would be you're on the right foot to make sure you're managing a sustainable organisation. But you're absolutely correct. Growth is a great thing, but it's also a matter that you need to be very conscious of as how do you manage growth, um, going forward over the long term.
Thank you, Mr. Keach. Are there any other questions at the CFO? No, thank you very much, Mr. Keach.
Thank you very much.
I'll open this item up for discussion. I'd just like to note to you, acting CEO, just the note here that the ICT expenditure was two million dollars lower than budget due to reduced expenditure required for one Nicola Street through repurposing equipment and reductions across the other projects. I want to pass on my thanks for that. And to the CIO, uh, who's in the public gallery. Thank you for the repurposing, um, of that, you know, for cost but environmental reasons as well. Any other discussion? Councillor Ireland?
Mayor, I've already put a request in through the CEO that, um, at the end of, um, well, in September, that. We get some graphs on how we're going to fund the Ripley Valley, um, work that has to be done. Um, I guess, uh, I disagree with the councillor that, um, we have to look at perhaps not more lots. Because we need more lots to be able to fund all the work that we've got to do. So I will be looking forward to seeing lots created out through Ripley Valley and further west as it goes, so that we can fund all our debt. Thank you.
Just through you, ma'am, and to councillor Ireland.
Sorry, if I could just speak to councillor Ireland. Um, as you know, on the, on the seventh of September, we're having a workshop on Ripley Valley and, and so on. And we've been doing some work with, um, the Queen's and Treasury Corp as well that's been undergoing since it's beginning of this year. So. I mean, that'll be something that we'll be discussing. Yes, councillor Fekner?
Uh, I, I also look forward to bringing and welcoming new people to our city. Um, but I think that it needs to be done in a considered way. Um, we can't just say that we want. You know, thousands of lots that look a particular way to, to get them, to get the maximum amount of people into the city. I think that we need to. Look to sustainable development. Um, and that's something that this council has historically been bad at doing. The, the, the lack of biodiversity, the remnant vegetation. That doesn't exist because of the way that the, that the city has grown. I think that, yes, we want to welcome, um, as many people to the city. But in a really sustainable and well.
I think that, yes, we want to welcome as many people to the city, but in a really sustainable and well-considered way. So I wasn't necessarily saying that we need to pump the brakes and stop all development, rather that we take a considered position moving forward.
Can I answer that one?
Yes, councillor Ireland.
It's a PDA. The state government sets the most plans out at Ripley Valley. So it's not that council itself, and if developers put in applications and they meet all the boxes, council can't knock it back. So you're saying let's try and stage it in a way that would suit us. Well, I don't think planning can do that, but I'm always happy to be proved wrong. But it is a PDA area and we have not as much control as you may like. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ireland.
Thanks councillor Ireland.
Thank you. There's no other comment. I'll put the matter to the vote. Item 15.3, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I now call for an adjournment for 15 minutes. It is, what, I'll, sorry.
Mayor, could we make that 20, please?
20 minutes, yeah, okay. It's 10:48. So I'll make it to 11:10. I'll put that matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous and carried. See you back at 11:10. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back to the ordinary council meeting of the 22nd of July. It's 11:10. And we're up to item 15.4, which is the Queensland Disaster Management Conference 2021. And I believe that in accordance with the requirements of the Representation of the City at Official Functions policy, Council Consul will be providing a verbal report outlining her learnings from her attendance at the Queensland Disaster Management Conference. The theme for 2021 was disaster management in the new COVID world. So I'll hand over to you to provide that update, Council Consulman.
Thank you, Mayor. The Queensland Disaster Management Conference 2021 was delivered by the Local Government Association of Queensland. The focus of the conference was about managing disasters in a changing world. It provided an opportunity for various organisations to come together and discuss the challenges of disaster management and review management practices. And those who came together are key partners in disaster management. I attended relative to my positions as deputy chair of the local disaster management group and chair of the local recovery group. One of the key takeaways was the story of climate change and the existence of more severe weather patterns which is expected to be exacerbated. And that is one of the being demonstrated throughout the world right now. The burden of disasters is greater than the direct damage estimates. Disasters have a very long tail, are very individual, and cause a great burden to our residents and to council itself. Within the fraternity of disaster managers, there is a new emphasis on professionalism, including the promotion of the emergency manager role with a recognised set of skills, a defined level of knowledge and autonomy in practice. And the concept of certification moves disaster management from vocation to profession. And this is going to be increasingly important in light of an increasing number of disasters that we can expect. The conference was useful for understanding disasters in the bigger context, emphasised the role of local government, and also introduced person-centred emergency preparedness. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Consulman, for that verbal report. Do I have a second up for that report? Thank you, Council Island. Do I have any discussion?
I just have a question, through the mayor. If there was a pandemic here in Ipswich, would the disaster management group have a role in that?
We would and we do, and we have.
So what would be the role? What would be the role?
The role is to support the health department, basically. The legislation mandates a role for local government in disaster management in every case. And so that's what we would do. And that's what we've been doing, supporting the local health authority in what they do with distribution of vaccines and so on.
Under the Disaster Management Act, we are in a disaster. We're in a declared disaster. So we've been in a disaster since the council was formed. I had my training actually before I was sworn in because we have been in that state of disaster. This is probably unusual. Usually when there's a disaster like a flood, like you've experienced, it's usually led by council. This one being a pandemic is being led by Queensland Health. So it's very different. So it's a top down as opposed to a bottom up approach. So it has been a very different way that disasters are managed. Yeah. So we have regular local disaster management group meetings and district disaster management group meetings, as well as regular teleconferences with the premier and the chief health officer when there's, you know, a change and things are happening like that as well, that we'll have teleconferences.
If I may just say, we were addressed by Dr Jeanette Young, and she gave us an overview of the response to the pandemic as well. Of course, there's no end to that story yet by any means. Well, it says that Queensland's closed its borders to New South Wales, so there may not be any more spread.
Thank you. If there's no more discussion, I'll put that that report be noted. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to item 16.1. It's a notice of motion from the deputy mayor. It's a rather lengthy one. So I'll hand over to you to read out your notice of motion and move it.
Thank you, Mayor. So my motion is that council establish suitable local office spaces at Springfield Central, Redbank Plains and Rosewood libraries for use by councillors to meet with local residents, businesses and community organisations. These spaces will be available on a permanent basis to ensure councillors maintain a presence and are available in the community they represent, to hear about local issues important to residents, and to make it easier for community members to provide feedback on these issues and the performance of council. To improve access, availability and facilitation of meetings for residents with their elected reps, and to provide increased confidentiality for residents and allow for improved security of personal information to guard against loss, unauthorised access or other forms of misuse. That council implement these spaces using existing infrastructure without additional commercial lease expenditure to council by the end of August 2021. That appropriate administrative support be made available at these locations as required, utilising existing resource allocations. And that section 9.5 of the councillor expenses reimbursement and administrative support policy be amended as follows by removing paragraphs 9.52 and 9.53 and replace with: Shared office facilities located within council administration building will be provided for other councillors. Dedicated multipurpose office and meeting space will be provided at suitable council customer service centres and library facilities. And access to dedicated councillor meeting rooms will be provided within the council administration building. In addition, access to dedicated multipurpose office and meeting space will be available at councils, customer service centres and library facilities. So I bring this motion to council.
I'll just get a second up for that.
Can I have a second up, sorry?
I'll second that.
The councillor, councillor Fekner, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fekner. So I'll just speak on this briefly. I bring this forward because one of the number one queries that I do get from my community is where is your office? Where can I find you? And when I do state that I'm working in Ipswich CBD and available on the road to meet with them, they seem quite disheartened from my division, mostly because it is a fair distance for them to travel. And then to book a time or a meeting with me is rather a formal process. I would like to be more hands-on in my community. And a lot of our ratepayers aren't used to, like booking formal meetings as such. And, you know, I get a lot of queries when I'm out and about, and I would love to have a hub that is available to me at all times so that I could facilitate a meeting with them on more of an ad hoc basis, so that I can be with my community, listening to them more, to then deliver adequate strategy for my division in particular, and other divisions as well that are further out from the Ipswich CBD. So I think it's vital that our connection be more established in the outer regions of our city. We have quite a large landmass that we need to be across, and our divisions are quite large. And so I think this will aid that facilitation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnick. Councillor Tully, do you wish to speak to us, the second up?
Councillor.
Oh, sorry, sorry. My apologies. Councillor Fekner, would you like to speak to us, the...
I speak in support of this motion, hence why I seconded councillor Johnick's very thoughtful notice of motion. Not costing the organisation any more money, which is great. Making the councillors who aren't CBD central more accessible to their residents is a wonderful initiative. And I support councillor Johnick in supporting her community, and thank her for bringing her residents' concerns to this table and having such a great solution, you know, and a good outcome for her division, and for those who live more remotely and want to drop in on a councillor rather than organising a meeting and trying to navigate all of our diary clashes and the calendar engineering that has to go into that. It can be quite confronting to ring up, to find some time in a councillor's diary and, you know, book in an appointment. The opportunity to drop in for councillors is really important, and I think that's great.
Thank you. Is councillor Madsen?
I'm more than happy to speak in support of this motion this morning. Recently been looking at some stats with councillor Ireland about the great Division One. Fifty-five point eight per cent of the city's area is in our division. That includes, you know, pretty important communities at Redbank Plains, equally at Granchester and Mount Maude, and everything in between. Particularly the, I'm sure you may have been caught in the traffic yesterday out to Redbank Plains, Mayor, with the still awaited works to be completed on the Cunningham Highway overpass on Redbank Plains Road. Without that connection there, if I come in here every morning, depending on the time that you leave, it can take you thirty to fifty, any time between thirty to fifty minutes to get out to Redbank Plains. It's an equal journey out towards Rosewood, and if you go to Mount Maude, well, that's another ten, twenty minutes on that. So that's the journey that residents have to take to come and see their councillor. Like, take it on the flip side. I don't think that's okay. I think decision makers in our city should be available to the people, and with a degree of convenience. With regards to how it is, like, people are out there trying to survive. They're working. Like, they don't, like, if you work, you can't get in here. If you work in Brisbane or anything like that, you need other options available to see your councillor. And indeed, some of the elderly populations aren't comfortable with driving that long to get a meeting. And in regards to just good local representation, if we're able to, you know, block out a day or two, we're physically embedded in Redbank Plains. We also get all those little intangibles that we're currently robbed of. You run into people when you pop out to get a coffee or a pie or whatever. You run into people and they say one or two things. I feel as somebody in Division One, the amount of time that I'm drawn towards this building here in the CBD, I'm robbed of some of that context that you just get on the street talking to people. And I'm much more keen to spend as much time as possible in my division, because I represent the area. And I'm very passionate about it. I want my focus to be able to be there. And I commend councillor Johnick for this motion that she's brought today.
Thank you. Councillor Doyle?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a short comment, just in support of councillor Johnick's notice of motion. Councillor Fekner and I, Division Three, we too represent suburbs, eastern suburbs. You know, three to four times a week, we're travelling down to Collingwood Park and Redbank, and attending appointments at residents' homes. And that's either during the day or into the evening. We see this as an opportunity to perhaps take those meetings to an official council office, should the desire be there of the resident to not meet at their home. And, you know, any opportunity to connect better with our community in this very complex digital world that we're in, it's just another opportunity. And, you know, as we've all spoken to, at no additional cost. So I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Councillor Tully?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm supportive of this motion. The previous divisional offices, the electorate offices, were the, in my view, the heart and soul of the community, well-regarded, respected and used by people in our communities of all age ranges, people who could come and see councillors in close proximity to where they live. It is, as councillor Johnick said, a very common, in my case, the most frequently asked question that I get on anything. It's not the council budget, it's not rates and charges, it's simply, where is your office? And most people, even now, don't even realise that the offices had been closed in 2018. If you look at the logistics of this, if you're a person living at Springfield Lakes, it's a forty-two kilometre round trip by vehicle into Ipswich to see a councillor, which I think is unreasonable. That's actually more than someone at Rosewood, where it's a forty kilometre round trip into Ipswich. If you have a vehicle, if you don't, if you lived at Springfield Lakes, you'd have to get a bus, if it's available, to the Springfield Central Railway station. From there to the train to the Dara station, and then another train into Ipswich. And that's an impulse which I think is unreasonable. Close to half of the city, half of the people in our city reside in the eastern suburbs. This will be significant, certainly for us, but this motion goes beyond Division Two. It incorporates, of course, divisions one and four in particular. But I think the opportunity is there. There are council premises, I think, at Riverview, a library at Redbank Plaza. I think it's a dynamic solution to an issue that the community is extremely keen, you know, to see their councillors back in the community, rather than necessarily in here. And I strongly support this motion.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other discussion?
Sorry, thank you, councillor Tully. Any other discussion?
Mayor, yes, I'd also like to speak in support of the notice of motion. Division Four is also geographically large, not quite as large as Division One, but we still have a dispersed population with different centres. Of course, out in the west, Rosewood is town for places like Hagsley and the surrounds. Marburg residents often just cross the hill to run into Rosewood. Of course, utilising our Rosewood library, Division Four councillors would be more than happy to have Division One councillors maybe pop in there occasionally for your close-by residents from as close as Ebenezer. For Division Four, the only downside I see is that north of the highway, Caralie only has a library pod, so that might be a bit difficult in the heat of summer. That's true. But in general, mayor, I would like to express my support. And I do know that Division Four residents in the rural areas in particular would very much appreciate being able to know that their local divisional councillor on a particular day is resident in office at the Rosewood Library and that allows them to call on easily. For my Division Four residents in Bressel and North Ipswich, well, there's still the main administration building here.
Thank you, councillor Milligan. Any other?
Oh, thank you, mayor. Just one final comment. And obviously, we're all, you know, appear to be very supportive of this notice of motion. We certainly don't want to discourage our residents from attending the beautiful administration building here, noting we have large meeting rooms on Level One that are very private. And the meetings I've attended with residents in those rooms there, really, really impressed and excited by the new facilities we've got here. So thank you.
Do you, councillor Doyle? I guess from my perspective, I see that all of us put our hand up to run as councillors because we want to represent our community and we want to help our community. And so we're always looking at ways that we can do that. And we came in obviously just as COVID was taking grip of our community. And so how we, you know, interact with residents has been very stymied. It's not the same doing a Zoom call or, you know, a phone call. It's been quite challenging for residents and also for us as a community. I do, I will be supporting this motion. I just point out the fact that by not having the 10 electoral offices, that has saved us $8 million over a four-year term. And that has meant that we can do things like fund rural roads, you know, a new curb and channeling programme and things like that. So I think it's very important to see that. And no other southeast Queensland council apart from Brisbane has electoral offices for individual divisions. I think this is a great compromise. I think having the libraries is, I think, is a really good way to address how are we able to reach out to the community more within costs. I also note too that when you look at, I think, following councillor Madison's lead on looking at the facts and figures, back in 2016, when the election was on, each of the councillors represented 16,000 residents with having 10 divisions. Now that there's four divisions, each of the divisions have about 57,000 people. So that's three times the number of people. And yes, there are two councillors, but I can tell you, in every single community group, sporting group, when we go to visit, they do expect to see both their councillors. So I do commend the hard work of this council, that they are servicing three times the number of residents and with fewer council support staff as well. So I do commend them and love the fact that you're wanting to get out there and wanting to spend more time with residents. And I think also looking at the fact that you've been very active in the community matters and those pop-up mobile offices around the place, which I think is fantastic. So I think this is a great idea. I guess I just look at, I don't know what the costs will be and if it will have an impact to the amenity and libraries, I guess we'll find that out. But I'll be supporting this motion as well.
If I may, Chair, just noting that the comments that were made that it's bringing no cost, if this motion were to be resolved, I feel an obligation to raise from a governance perspective that based on the information I have, it would not be possible without cost. So I would, I guess, foreshadow that I would feel an obligation to bring a report back to you on the implications of the decision at the earliest opportunity.
Just a clarification. The motion doesn't refer to no cost, does it?
Yes, it does.
What whereabouts?
At C was utilising existing resource allocations.
Yeah, but that doesn't, yeah, that doesn't say at no cost.
And B, without additional commercial lease expenditure.
Mayor, if I may, three years, Chair, I was referring to the comments that were made by the councillor speaking in support, where councillor Feknar, I think, has at least one mentioned that they supported on the basis that there was no cost.
Yeah. Through you, mayor, I think I may have been guilty of the comment around no cost and perhaps that was too broad of a generalisation. Obviously, you'll need to prepare a report on this and investigate what additional support will be required within those existing centres. And obviously, there may be a cost around that. Could I just also ask, I'm assuming a point of difference in this to the way the old divisional officers ran, that official council business, for example, paying a rate bill or, you know, inquiring around dog registration can occur at these new spaces. As councillor Tully said, it's a dynamic solution. So I'm just keen to understand that those things can occur. I think it's important.
Yeah, the council connect is set up in those libraries, so you can pay your rates or, you know.
Perfect, thank you.
I think practically anything except for lodging DA, I think, nearly, but most services. Yeah, councillor Madison.
I do not believe the people of Red Bank Plains have the convenience of a council connect yet.
Correct.
We might be able to defer the question, but I do retract my statement, no cost. But I think that it will be a low-cost solution for the organisation to implement. But yeah, I also query the ability for Red Bank Plains constituents to pay their rates at the Red Bank Plains Library. I was under the impression that that was available at Rosewood and Springfield, but not necessarily at Red Bank Plains.
Yep. I think to Red Bank Plains, it's just the one meeting room, is that correct, councillor Madison? So, and that's, yeah, yeah. I just note that the recommendation says that there were, without any additional commercial lease expenditure and utilising existing resource allocations. So it's my understanding from this motion that it's to be at no additional cost, but I'll refer to the mover, to her.
So by utilising existing resource allocations to councillors in the form of office expenditure and stationery, I guess, which was the purpose of that recommendation. And also just pointing out that the kind of infrastructure charges that might have been $8 million in the past are non-existent here because the premises are already under our control, basically. So.
So if I could just clarify, is it your expectation that there be no additional costs? With this?
No additional costs capitally or in?
Or operating?
I don't have privy of any asset register that lets me know what type of petitions might be available to section off certain office space in these facilities. But I would leave that to the organisation and the CEO to organise and arrange.
I think councillor Madison was waiting next.
I just wanted to say, like, one key variance. I mean, perhaps we were just taking a bit of poetic licence because it effectively is no cost compared to the older model. And one key important thing of that is there's no leases being undertaken. There's no risk in that regard. There's no long-term commitments that are being made to any site that we would have to pay out should we want to exit that lease. There was a quirk in former financial statements where because councillor Ireland's divisional boundaries moved a lot over her career, they had to move her office routinely to actually be in her area. So her councillor expenses looked a bit higher because they were putting the office fit out on that. And I found that quite interesting to read because it gave you an idea of how different those leases cost across the city. And it makes sense, like, that's how commercial real estate works. But we're not open to any ongoing programme of works to provide that amenity. It's existing council locations. There's no ongoing fit out and cancelling leases and so forth. It's, from a risk perspective, I think it's pretty solid.
Thank you, councillor. I think councillor Tully wanted to say something?
Yes, thank you, mayor. The motion speaks for itself and I guess it's trite to say that other comments that have been made around the table, you know, in a general sort of sense, don't form necessarily part of the proposed motion. But paragraph B is clear that it's talking about any additional commercial lease expenditure and that specifically refers to that. And paragraph C is the only part of the motion that I can understand also talks about potential costs utilising the administrative support based on the existing resource allocations. It doesn't say there would be absolutely no costs like $1 or other amounts for signage and, you know, other ongoing costs there. And I think, you know, as the administration will look to the implementation of this, I feel that obviously I shouldn't be reading into it more than perhaps what people said that there'd be no cost because there's obviously got to be some cost, people moving, you know, tables, chairs and things like that. But the critical issue is that there'd be no additional lease expenditure and no additional staff to the council, which I think is very significant.
I understand that. I guess I'm being the devil's advocate here from a good governance perspective. We're looking at something that's a substantial change and we don't have any costings. So that's probably my concern that I have here while I'm having the discussion about what's people's expectation of costings for the organisation to implement. We're asking them to do something and we have no costings, which again doesn't follow good governance principles. So, like I said, I'm supportive of this motion, but I think we also have to have reported back to us on the cost of this as well. Councillor Milligan?
Mayor, yes, I did identify myself that there may be small ancillary costs as councillor Tully alluded to in item C of the notice of motion that with appropriate administrative support, with our council liaison officers or research officers, this being their usual place of work, would they attend here first and then book out a fleet vehicle to attend out there if we needed them on-site? I don't know. That would be something that would probably be possibly discussed within the acting CEO's report. Other things such as signage, we would have to probably check whether, within governance, we could have physical signage at those library sites to say that divisional councillors are there, whether we're allowed to have our names on there or not, whether that's appropriate. It's just those small matters like that, but I'm absolutely confident that the acting CEO would cover all that within the report provided.
Councillor Feknar?
Yeah, and just speaking in support of councillor Madison's comments about risk position being low and us all being in support of councillor Johnick's motion, we're still in the exploration phase of this, I guess. And the order of costs could increase or decrease operationally depending on what options are presented to us moving forward. So I look forward to seeing how the organisation responds to this to get the best possible outcome at a reasonable price for the ratepayer. And again, I retract my statement of no cost.
Thank you.
Thank you, acting CEO.
Thank you. I think we've all had a discussion, so I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. It's unanimous and passed. I guess we'll look forward to the report back from you, acting CEO, on this. So thank you. Item 17 is questions on notice. There are none, so I will close the meeting. It is 11:42 and thank you very much.